All set.
All right, thank you. It is now Tuesday, December 1st, and we are opening our selectmen's meeting in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 auto suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 3820. This meeting will be held remotely and in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be, oh, they will be, right? Public can be available in this one?
Yes.
Yes, so that's what it says, you know. We'll be able to physically, we'll not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcasted live on Comcast Channel 12 and can also be viewed via livestream WHCA TV. It will subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. Saying that, stating that, first on the agenda, can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And as customary, if we may hold a moment of silence in keeping your thoughts, any personal preferences that you would like? I need a motion to approve Bill and Perrow warrant.
So move, Brian.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Randy. Any discussion? Vote, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We'll need a motion to accept the correspondence in the read file.
So move, Brian.
Your second?
Second, Randy.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will say yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes for open session November 10th. Do I hear a motion?
So move, Brian.
Second, second, Randy, thank you. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, around the table, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is a hearing, a public hearing to consider an adjustment of the special meeting, special town meeting quorum requirements. Lisa?
Hi, good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair. As remember during our last meeting, we spoke about the need to hold a special town meeting. We had a few things that need approval from town meeting. And we talked about possibly reducing the quorum from our 150 to whatever the least is that we could have that's allowed under our COVID number, order 54 from the governor. We did, it was advertised in public, publicized in the Whitman Express. And under the new regulations that the governor announced back in early November, there was a question of whether public settings fell under the new, no more than 10 indoors. However, I did find that as far as gatherings for, in public settings, they still have the maximum of 25 people. Our quorum for a special town meeting is 150. Under the governor's regulations, we can go down to 10% of that for a special town meeting. However, if we did that, you know, considering what's going to be on the warrant would be an article for the force main. So what we'll have in attendance are finance committee, order selectmen, DPW commissioners, we'll have our DPW superintendents, and then folks that would want to attend. So I'm going to recommend that we lower the quorum to 25 people. That seems to be a reasonable number. I've talked to some other communities. Hanson has successful special town meeting with 25 quorum. East Bridgewater actually eliminated their quorum and they're going to be having their meeting next Monday, I believe. So that seems to be the route that towns are going right now, just to make sure that we can accomplish the business we need to accomplish. And considering what needs to be done, once a vote is taken tonight, if it is voted to recommend lowering our quorum, our town clerk must send that to the Attorney General's Office for approval within 10 days. So we're probably looking at a town meeting, a special town meeting at some point in January. I've reached out to the schools to see, check their availability for their larger rooms and also reached out to our town council as well as our town moderator to check availability for a January town meeting. And it looks like possibly maybe the 13th. And also, we can choose to have an evening town meeting or Saturday town meeting, special town meeting. Hanson had a special town meeting on a Saturday and it was successful and they were able to get all of their town business accomplished. So based on the timelines, January, maybe 13th, the 20th, or the 27th are dates that are available, that our town council has available, and they all appear to be Mondays. And basically, the school is available for the Performing Arts Center, which they can safely hold 100 people with implementing the social distancing guidelines. So we do that have available, and I'm just asking the board to support lowering the quorum for a special town meeting to 25 so we can move forward and get our town business that we need to get accomplished done.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. I see that we have a town moderator, Michael Sealy, and a town clerk, Don Valley. I'd like to ask first, Mike, do you have any, any preferences or any discussion on maybe what to lower the quorum? If you think that 25 is not enough or too much or whatever?
I'm okay with it. I mean, obviously, it would be very difficult to get 150 people out for something like this in this time. My question would be regarding the high school, which is obviously the only place we could, we could hold something indoors safely. If, if, what if we get more than 100 people who come? Do I know the last time, when we had the last town meeting back in the, I guess it was in the summer, we looked at the gymnasium as being a site, just because you never know. I mean, it's, it seems, it doesn't seem likely that we would get 100 people, but you never know.
Right.
Just to make sure we have a space that's large enough.
Yeah, my question on that, Mike, is if we hold it, we'll say, if it's on a Monday night and we use the gym, are we interfering with any type of sports or anything going on at the high school? That's, you know, performing arts, probably we wouldn't be interfering with anything.
Right, right.
You know, I was thinking, you know, would Saturday be a better day where there's no school on Saturday? But then again, if we wanted to use the gym.
Right.
They may have, I don't know, do they have, are they running basketball?
So the gym, the gym is not available during the weekday, obviously, because school's in session. On Saturdays, they do have events in the gym from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So we, we could possibly look at, you know, a Saturday afternoon, maybe at 5:00 o'clock for, for a special time meeting if we wanted to do something in the gym, so that, that is a possibility.
Don, do you have any thoughts on that? Yeah, muted.
I think muting me might be a good idea, right? You know, I'm with Mike, you know, there are a few concerns. It is a hot topic, it is money. You could get, you know, you can never predict how many people are going to be there. And I think we need to be ready to have 100 people, even though we, you know, I do agree with Lisa that we should reduce the quorum. I don't think you'll, I don't think you'll get 150, but you never know. And, and you have to be ready for all circumstances, so that's how I feel. And I'll be available, my office will be available, any of those Mondays, whatever works for everybody else.
Yeah. Justin, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if we plan on the Performing Arts Center, I know the high school has a small lecture hall upstairs that they can link up and have possibly overflow. The library's got tech access, so if we're streaming it, we can, we can invite the public to join in other rooms and then come to the Performing Arts Center for questions if it becomes a logistics issue. It may require an additional election worker or two to man those rooms, but just to coordinate the flow of traffic. That would only be if we run over, yeah, but that would only be if we run over the 100 people.
And one other note about the gym is that they can't regulate the temperature in the gym. So, you know, if it's a cold night, then people would have to make sure they, they dress appropriately accordingly.
How many articles are on the warrant? Just the one?
There, there'll be one article for the approval of the borrowing for the force main. That, that's necessary. And then we have some unpaid bill from last fiscal year. So there'll be basically four articles.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I do. Can you give me those dates again, were they all Mondays?
Yes, yes, they're all Mondays.
11, 18, 25, is that recent?
January, let's see, January 6, 13, 20, and 27. Hold on, I just realized I'm looking at a 2020 calendar that.
Why I asked, because it didn't jive.
Oh, come on. All right, so 2021, okay, so I apologize, they're Wednesdays. The 6, 13th, the 20th, and the 27th are all Wednesdays. And that, that's the day that our town council is available. And again, the Performing Arts Center is available any of the weeknights or Saturday. The gym is only available on Saturdays after 1:00 PM and it's not available during the week.
Okay. When is the last day that we need to pick a date? What's the timeframe as to how we have to notify everyone?
Well, we need to give them, we need to post the warrant at least 14 days prior.
So we could, we could potentially vote the quorum today and then at our next meeting, set the date of the town meeting?
Yes, because we also want to, remember that the town clerk needs to alert the Attorney General's Office of the change in quorum and they need to approve it.
Okay.
And after the workers, so.
Yeah, the only thing, the 20th is a Wednesday, you're saying?
They're all Wednesdays.
They're all Wednesdays.
That 20th is when Celtrivotec sets their budget. So that may be an issue for me. I mean, I cannot go to the Celtrivotec meeting. But I would, you know, I'd have to meet with Tom afterwards and see how they set the budget. So out of all those, I would prefer not to have it on the third Wednesday of the month of January. Very important on that budget issue.
Sure.
I would rather push it off as far as, as far as we can, given what's going on right now with the uptick of cases. You know, put, push it off till the last, the last date there, the 27th.
27th?
At least that gives us some time to see, you know, what's, if this trend that we're seeing health-wise is going to continue or if it plateaus and we start going the other way by then, hopefully. 60 days seems to be, you know, an eternity with, under what's going on with COVID, so.
Right, now, that's, that's a good suggestion, yes, Justin.
I would, I would just, I agree with Randy, but I think the urgency is so that the DPW can begin bidding for a spring construction project.
Yes, that's why I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would want to keep it in January so that they can get everything in place they need to as soon as the spring.
You're saying, Lisa, our council can only be there on a Wednesday?
Yes, the Wednesdays are the only days that she's available.
Does she need to be there? We're talking about one, four, four articles.
I don't think it's required, no.
I mean, do we really need a, our lawyer to be there just to talk about four articles? We know, you know, we certainly know the rules of the road on voting. What do you think?
I don't, for four articles, I don't believe, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to have them there for four articles. The DPW will be there to speak about the borrowing for the force main. And then the other three are just unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year. So there's really nothing controversial that's, you know, could rise to that point.
Right, and the only, the only rules on borrowing that we have to have a, not a majority, but 50%, 75%?
Yeah, right. Well, with the, with the cost, with the cost, you'd need to have the, well, if you're only looking at 25 people, I mean, two thirds.
Yeah. Should be simple enough. You know, I mean, I can understand what Randy's saying too, but we also need to be able to bid out there so they can stop that project.
Right.
Before any possible failures due to that pipeline. Yes, Brian?
I, I kind of agree with Randy on the date and the stretch out of the timing, but we don't have to pick that today. So maybe we could find out from the DPW commissioners, what's their drop dead date to give them their timeframe is what they need to get everything done for the construction time in the spring.
Right, that sounds like a plan.
We could pinpoint it a little bit better, but I do agree with Randy that I think that the later in January we, we go, I think would be better.
Okay.
We did want to be careful because we did, kind of did that for this past annual town meeting and, you know, we pushed it out almost to the end of July and had to have it outside on a 90-degree day.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's, we're either dealing with heat waves or snowstorms, so.
Late January is blizzard time.
It's really crucial that the DPW get this, you know, town meeting approval for this because the force main, yeah, they need to be able to begin that project.
Okay, how about if we just set, set the, the amount that we're going to ask the state to approve as far as having a quorum? And then again, like Brian said, we can contact the DPW and see where the numbers are. In the meantime, I can get ahold of Tom Hickey and talk to him about the January meeting. If, you know, if that's going to be an issue, if I'm not there or not, you know, we put it together. Yes, Justin?
And just, can Lisa reach out to town council about maybe a Saturday meeting to see if they're, throw it out there?
True, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. That it, so, all right, so.
Oh, actually, I apologize, she, she, she wrote that she can do any Saturday in January.
Oh, works for us then.
So I actually already asked her, but I just kind of focused on the, during the week.
Okay, so we'll find out from the DPW when's the latest they need, because I agree with Randy, if we put it off as late as possible so that we can, you know, so because of the situation that all the towns are in. And if they give us a date and we can do that Saturday before the date or the Saturday after the date, whatever, if that works for everybody, I think that's a good plan, what do you think?
We should.
Sounds like a plan. All right, so are we in agreement? We want to go with the minimum of 25? And of course, if we get more, that's fine. Are we comfortable with that? I see.
Yes.
Okay, so do I, you need a motion, right?
Yes, if you could do a motion, Dan.
I'd like to have a motion to lower the, the special town meeting warrant.
Quorum.
Quorum from 150 to 25, and this is a one-time only, right?
This is for this, this special town meeting.
One-time only, right.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second that, but I do, I do have a question about this. Don, to put this in, does she need, need a date? Lisa, do you know that, if when she files, if she's going to need a meeting date?
You know, the, the law doesn't say that she needs a date, it just says that she needs to provide the Attorney General's Office with notice of the adjusted quorum requirement. So it doesn't say that there's a requirement to give a date for the meeting.
Okay, then you have the second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other further discussion? Seeing none, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So there we go. Okay, thank you very much to Mike and Don. You want to stick around, you can, if not, have a good night.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Next on the agenda is, let's see, the update on COVID-19, COVID-19.
Okay, so unfortunately, Whitman went back into the red under the new formula. And as of today, actually, the, the rate, these rates, tested rates are from last week through the 26th of November. We had 62 positive tests out of 12, 28 testing that gave us a 5.5% positivity rate. Hanson had 33 positive tests out of 789, so they're at a 4.18, just to compare. And as of last week, we had three possible clusters. Today, one of them was cleared, so we have two possible clusters in the town. One is Cristo's, and from my understanding, they are, they are closed for at least the next 10 days. The other cluster is at Mary Deb, and they are working to identify any close contacts at this point. So that's where we are with that. You know, fortunately, this, the virus seems to be just running rapid.
Yeah, does anybody have questions to Lisa on this issue? Seeing none, next on the agenda is budget review. Lisa, again.
Okay, so I had sent out this morning and then a Article 2 as it stands right now, and there's a couple of updates I just wanted to point out. And Mr. Acting Chair, if it's okay with you, I would like to just take the Veterans Service, the Veterans Agent a little bit out of, out of schedule because the Article 2 kind of pertains to the Veterans Agent.
Okay.
Okay, so during our last meeting, we talked about looking into a full, on our end, it would be a full-time Veterans Agent at 28 hours. And after I had advertised and receiving applications, it was brought to my attention that there is a law out there, a Massachusetts law, Code of Massachusetts regulations that states that when a Veterans Service Officer leaves a position in a town, if the position was a part-time position, the new Veterans Agent, we must either join a district or the new Veterans Agent must be hired as full-time. So what that would mean on our end is that the 28 hours that we were looking at would now be 31 because full-time at Town Hall is 31 hours. As far as looking at the salary, after, again, looking at what other towns were paying for that range of hours and, and speaking with Ken Littell, we decided to keep the salary at the $55,000 for the additional three hours. This is going to be, yes, a department head, but it's a department head that has no supervisory staff, basically. There's no staff to supervise, so it's a, it's a, it's a one-person department. So the annual salary at $55,000 was still very reasonable. And we actually got a lot of response to the ads. And then what I did was I placed an ad, an amended ad in the Whitman Express just to point out that the hours had changed and put the new hours, but yet the salary remained the same. So I did put that out and the deadline is still December 8th for submission. But in the Article 2, we kept, like I said, we kept that, the salary at $55,000, but increased the hours to 31.
Anybody have any questions, Lisa, on this issue? Now, Lisa, you need a vote to maintain the increase of three hours or no?
I have one question.
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
I can't remember this, is, is there a requirement that the Veterans Agent be a veteran?
Yes, I believe there is a requirement.
Yes, yes. So do we need a motion to increase it, call it full-time or no?
No, just a motion to increase the hours from 28 to 31 because as I was, again, reached out to other towns to find out what their full-time consisted of, again, there was, there was 35 hours, 30 hours, 40 hours. So again, it was all across the board of what their definition of full-time is. So on our end, in the town of Whitman, our Town Hall is open 31 hours, which would be considered our full-time position. And also too, I was just looking for a selectman who would want to be a part of reviewing the resumes and applications and then be a part of the interview team.
Yeah, Brian?
Yeah, I'd volunteer unless somebody wants to do it.
Well, it just happens that you are the liaison.
Right.
For the vaccination, so absolutely.
And our temporary, Chris Buckley, who is from East Bridgewater, who has been helping out on Mondays from 1:00 to 4:00, he's actually, he's also volunteered to help us review the resumes. So he's made himself available for that as well.
Right.
Okay, any other further questions? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to increase the hours from, what is it, from 28?
From 28 to 31.
I'll make that motion, Brian.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, back to the top of the.
Okay, so back to the budget review. And the second, and this, the second line item I wanted to point out, one of the last conversations we had, the medical and life insurance, especially the medical, when I attended the Mayflower Municipal Health Group meeting back in November, we were hoping to have some idea of what they were looking at for an increase in rates. And unfortunately, COVID's had a big impact on that and they were being, they were delaying the rates until January just to see what type of impact on the facilities that COVID has had. So it, I left it at level funded, but then with speaking with Ken, it was better decided that we might want to put something in there as a placeholder rather than level funded. And what I did was we, I put a 3.5% increase in, just looking at what we did in the prior years. But then I was fortunate enough to have a conversation with Tom O'Brien, who is the treasurer for the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. And he, I talked to him about the placeholder and he, he mentioned to me that the national increase is running between 7% and 10%. However, our particular group is very financially strong. And we've actually had, out of all of our participants, a low hospitalization rate for COVID. So because of those two reasons, he felt that a 5% placeholder is very reasonable for that line item for the insurance increase rates. So Ken updated the Article 2 to show the 5% placeholder for medical and life insurance with the town match. And with the $55,000 we left at the veterans, basically, that brought our ultimate deficit to about 788,573 right now. But again, it's still a work in progress, but I just wanted to point it out, those two specific line items for. specific line items for tonight, because those were some of the the changes that we made to try and get something on the table for that, where nobody could really take a guess of what the COVID was going to impact on insurance rates.
Right, plus, I was in the office when Lisa and I were talking about this, and I think that, yeah, that, we're in a deficit of that area, but we still have to wait for the schools to come in to see exactly where we're standing.
Right.
As far as the assessment from both Whitman Hanson and Salchow Votech. And where we're going, so. Anybody else, any question? Yes, Randy?
Yes, I've also seen a, well, obviously looked at the draft article, too. And I think if you go through and look at it, this is where these recommendations that we got from Mr. Madden become crucial. As you go down those lines, you you see significant percentages over, you know, where he recommended us to be at. And and I think that number of seven eighty-eight should, you know, should be resounding to our department heads that if you came in over, you know, drastically over that percentage of two and a half and and what we had allotted for the schools, the funds just aren't going to be there. We're in a pandemic year, and I just want to allude to a couple of things that got tossed out. One I heard from the Finance Committee is Mr. Madden recommended, from watching a Finance Committee meeting, recommended an override. Well, what was all, yes, he did say at some point we would need an override. There are some factors that were not taken into consideration when his report was complete, was that we would ultimately move to the statutory method, which we've done. And also, a pandemic was was not in his forecast. And I think that that's, you know, something we all have to keep in the back of our minds is, you know, I think in unemployment in Massachusetts is up to about eight percent right now. You hear daily from your neighbors, just, people are hurting right now, whether it's just taking time off to to be with their kids as their remote learning or their their businesses have been slashed. I think we're going to be able to do it this year, but I think we, you know, those recommendations are going to hold tried and true, and and we need to all be on the same page as we're pushing that forward.
Very good. I agree, Randy. Anybody else? Yes, Justin?
Yeah, I had a conversation over the last couple of weeks with the Town Accountant and the Treasurer Collector along a couple of lines that were currently funding non-union hourly wages below the state minimum wage. I believe the clerk sent a memo that will probably be in our next Selectmen's Meeting, so I won't get ahead of myself with open meeting law. But there are at least a couple of lines in here where I think we could look at funding hourly wages that meet the state minimum wage. I think it's three departments, and it's small change, non-union workers.
Okay, something we'll discuss. I believe our next meeting that we're going to have, we're going to be dealing with the with the company that's going to be looking at in Town Administrator, so I don't want to put it on that one. That's going to be a long meeting because we're going to be having, doing interviews, so we'll wait for the meeting after we discuss that.
Okay.
And I will probably, I will not be at that meeting for obvious reasons, so.
Okay.
What, is there a date for that?
Was that the, is that week after, is it next week?
The ninth.
The ninth at six o'clock or something, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's that's the meeting I will not be at.
Right, you should have got a vote to get there, Brian.
Okay.
An email stating the Zoom line. Okay, that it on the budget review?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is vote to appoint Richard Belcher to the position of a full-time patrolman effective upon his first day of attendance at the Police Academy. Do I hear a motion?
Actually, before Mr. Acting Chair, before that.
Yeah, did I miss something?
So the, actually, the appointment date for for Officer Belcher should read effective eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty, because that is the last day of the list, the Civil Service list. The physical, physical test that he took was on November eighteenth, and the list was set to expire on the twenty-third. So in order to avert having to go to a new list, his appointment date is the twenty-third, where he is the top of the list, so it would fit into that timeframe.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a second on that? Second. Do you have any questions?
Just a quick, are we allowed to do those retroactive effective dates?
Yeah, I I basically sent in the paperwork, the form to Civil Service on the twenty-third. So they are okay with us appointing it on December first today.
Okay, that being said, so the motion will be that to vote that Richard Belcher to the position of a full-time patrolman effective eleven twenty-three?
Yes, twenty twenty.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor? Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Vote to accept the disclosure of elections or appointments to the uncomprehended position as required by nine thirty CMR six oh two three and disclosure of appearance of a conflict of interest as required by General Law twenty-six, two six A A twenty-three for Mark Poria. I guess this disclosures the fact that Mark Poria worked for the town, he's a police officer, and he has just been elected as a Commissioner for the DPW. That's it, right, Lisa? Basically?
That's correct, yes.
And he just wanted that known. We don't need a vote on that, right? All right, yes, we need a vote to accept that.
Just to, yes, to accept the disclosure.
Do I hear a motion?
So will Brian.
Second, Randy.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Unemployed, next on the agenda, unemployment claim, Lisa.
Yes, okay, so since the start of this pandemic, we have all of a sudden been inundated with fraudulent unemployment claims. They were, they're coming in in droves, and I was finding that trying to keep up with the numerous requests and paperwork required, I was not, I couldn't keep up with it. And the timeframe that they gave you when you receive these notices literally was like three days. And so if we received something on the nineteenth of November, they won it back by the twenty-third, and it just wasn't happening. I reached out to East Bridgewater and asked them how they were handling these unemployment claims. And they forwarded to me the name of a company called Unemployment Tax Management Corporation. And those folks are working with East Bridgewater, Abington, Whitman Hanson, and many other communities around to tackle these these fraudulent claims. And what their services include is any claim that comes in, they handle all the responses, all the paperwork, but they do it all online. They handle any appeals, they handle any auditing, they handle any protests or any further illegal activity or fraudulent claims. So I asked them to give me a proposal because basically I don't want the town to get in trouble because I'm unable to keep up with all of the, as many claims just coming in. Their their fee, they charge quarterly, their fee for Whitman on a quarterly basis is six hundred and ninety-five dollars. You know, for everything that they're going to provide, it it's really something that I strongly recommend that we do. I actually asked them to, you know, come on board with Whitman to help me get through with this because as the claims came in and all these other things were piling up, I was afraid that the that the town was going to be penalized because I just couldn't get to these. I did manage to get us online, but then I needed some help with maneuvering the system. And these folks, within one phone call, showed me how to look at the claims, but they said, we will get these all cleared up for you, and any questions, we will reach out to you. So I'm just asking for you to just be okay that I went, moved forward to do this, you know, to basically save Whitman any penalties. Normally, their agreements are two years. I asked them to do just one year, but this is not going away anyway soon. This is a problem that's going to continue. And they suggested a two-year agreement, which other towns have done. And again, it's a very little amount of money, but they are going to help us tremendously with these fraudulent claims.
Right, now, Lisa, if I'm not mistaken, if in fact we don't send the claim in and the state fines us, it's what, a hundred dollars a claim?
I'm not sure of the exact fine, but, you know, when they start to catch up with these, when they see the ones that they've got there late, they can start fining us for it.
Right, so.
So I, yeah, when I started, I mean, it was, it was okay when we were getting two or three, but now we're getting anywhere from five to eight of these a day. And there were, some of them are repeated. So we've already did the paperwork, but they want more information, which is about six pages worth of questions. It's it's just, it's really overwhelming, and we're not the only ones. It's nationwide, the scam is.
Right, I know Whitman Hanson has that issue. I know that I talked to Tom Hickey, Salchow Votech, has that issue, and they're and they're looking to get somebody, too.
Yes.
Brian, you had something to say?
I just wanted to concur with Lisa. I've read a lot of articles lately about the extent of these claims across the Commonwealth and their enormous numbers. And and they're just going to keep coming at you and coming at you. And for us to pay that small of a fee, to have the state care of and freeing up Lisa since she's kind of doing two jobs in one, to me, it's a no-brainer, and I I think this is money well spent.
Right.
This, this is the, this is the folder that I had to change the claims in that we've gotten. They come in every day in droves.
Okay, any any further questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to be, to allow Lisa to hire this company, where it's twenty-eight hundred bucks for the year?
Right, well, actually, for for the two years. Because like I said, this is going to continue on, and then we may face either audits or, you know, we may face some other challenges along the way that these folks are going to, they will represent us with with the Mass D U A, sorry.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
Do I hear a motion that will allow?
And you have a second?
Right, and nothing further? Right, Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Position, just call unemployment claim. Okay, next. Next on the new business is review the following licenses for calendar year twenty twenty-one, subject to payment of license fee, no outstanding tax issues, the submittal of all required new documents and the approvals where required of the building and fire departments. The list is all alcohol liquor licenses, all alcohol package store liquor licenses, amusement live entertainment licenses, automatic amusement device licenses, Class One auto dealers licenses, Class Two auto dealers licenses. Get on the line here. Carmen Vicula licenses. I'm reading off my computer here. Carmen Vicula, all alcohol liquor licenses, Carmen Vicula wine and malt liquor license. Graduate housing licenses, former farmer series, farmer series pouring permit. General on-premise all alcohol licenses, general on-premise wine and malt licenses, public entertainment and Sunday licenses, room and house, rooming house licenses, wine and malt package liquor licenses. And that's it. That's the list of all the different types of licenses. Do I hear a motion?
I'll motion that we accept all these licenses.
Do I hear a second? Thank you, Randy. Any further discussion? All hearing none. Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We're going into old business. We've already discussed the Veteran Service Officer, and now we're into strategic plan. Lisa?
All right, so we have our Ann Donner consulting. Justin, do you see her?
Yes, she's in the attendees list. Let me promote her.
Okay, great. So Ann Donner is going to be working with us with our strategic planning. She has a presentation for us, and then she would like to ask some questions. Hi, Ann, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for inviting me. And Lisa, if you can pass the baton, actually, I guess I can show the screen. I'm going to show my screen. Okay, one second. Here we go.
Here we are.
Okay, and I'm going to. Okay, okay, here we go. So thank you for inviting me tonight to talk about, like, strategic planning for the town of Whitman. And I've had opportunity to talk to Lisa several times and read some background material on the town. And I, but I just wanted to start out by just giving a little bit of background on myself and my interest in strategic planning and working with public agencies and towns and municipalities. So I started consulting in two thousand and four. I, you know, that's when I founded my practice, and I come from a background of, I worked for the city of Boston and have been involved with various civic and urban development initiatives in and around the city. And my, I specialize in strategic planning, facilitation, program design implementation, and evaluation, and as well as interim leadership. I work with public, private, and nonprofit sectors. And my focus is economic development, transportation infrastructure, public planning, and workforce development. Some of my public clients include mass development, the city of Brockton, city of Boston, the Working Cities Challenge, which was an initiative in gateway cities throughout Massachusetts, and then, and the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development. So with that, I wanted just to talk a little bit about, like, the, you know, strategic plan is sort of a broad term for, you know, really developing a mission and a vision and a strategy to achieve it, right? And it can take many forms, but I, but one of the things that struck me is that, and I want to just focus on this first sentence, is that the key to executing your strategy is to have people understand it. And and including the processes by which intangible assets will be converted into tangible outcomes. And the the best plans are the ones that people actually use and refer to, and they're not sitting on a shelf, and it's, you know, they, strategic planning has gotten this really bad rap of being a big tome that nobody looks at, and they sort of recall, didn't we do one of those like three or four years ago? And they never really look at it. So that's not what I'm about. And that's why I don't think that you're about that either. So the the purpose and objective of strategic plans usually, you know, well, they tend, they can be broad. You know, so for an example, for, you know, a municipality, you know, to be recognized by citizens and neighbors as a welcoming community that is full of opportunity, that's a broad, like, vision, like, and for a strategic plan. So everything that you do in that planning process contributes to that vision, or it can be very specific. You can focus on one particular area, agency, initiative. And so that would include something like investing in infrastructure that supports economic growth. So I just wanted to give you two examples of how to think about it. You know, for, I, I thought this was an interesting, you know, sort of graphic because I think that this shows that, one, strategic plans and the process of planning comes in all different forms. And so this is really a, you know, And so this is really a, you know, this is beautiful because it's so simple. Um, you know, so for the um, for police and secure, for police and security organization, um, you know, they, they clearly state what their mission is, you know, in like a couple of phrases. They want to protect the civil society from criminal activity. They want to provide leadership, intelligence and law enforcement to their partners, and they want to protect the rights of all citizens. And everything underneath that is contributing to that overall mission. You know, so they're going to do it through their internal processes, through management, um, through crime prevention and collaborations and partnerships. So um, and they're going to support it, that underpinning is through learning and growth. You know, sort of, they want to improve, they, they want to have a, the infrastructure of their um, their leadership and um, making sure that there's professional development. And then um, you know, again, uh, the underneath that is to really uh, again, underpinning all to support this overall, you know, sort of vision and mission for their uh, police and security organization. So um, so and in a sense, I just wanted to point out that um, that plans come in many shapes and forms and sometimes it's really about a department or a overarching agents organization, you know, really understanding what the priorities are and what you want to focus on. Okay, and um, so it can be by department in the case of the um, a town or a city. Um, it could be in support of a, a major, like an initiative um, which might be addressing, um, for example, um, access to um, uh, you know, sort of parks and that everybody, you know, all the departments in one way, shape or form are contributing to that vision and see like a connection to what their department is doing. And or it can be um, you know, very um, you know, broad that each department has their own uh, sort of mission, internal processes and goals that they want to achieve and they want to work on and improve over the course of a period of time. Um, the elements of a plan, um, you know, all, I mean, the plans, as I said, they come in um, different forms, but they really have all, they, they share these elements. Um, they're, they're data informed. Um, and that it, it's hard to plan unless you have the facts. That there's outcomes and measures, outcome measures and progress tracker. It's like, what do we want to do? And then how do we know if we're doing a good job of doing that? How are we being effective? Um, so that's a really important element um, in terms of a, a plan and its utility as a, as a tool to have continuous improvement. Um, it involves um, multiple stakeholders. So whether it's like community, um, it can be uh, partner organizations, it can be um, you know, uh, yeah, obviously constituents are really important. Um, you know, uh, part of this planning process. Um, and uh, you know, so the, the state, but having, everyone who's got a reason to be interested in this process to have some way of impacting and informing the direction of it. Um, it's participatory. Um, it's, there's a timeframe usually because a plan is not open-ended. It's like, over what time are you going to um, try to achieve these goals and objectives? Is it a three-year? Is it going to coincide with the capital plan? Um, so that's, these are the kinds of things that we look at. That the format of the plan really fits the organization's needs. So uh, that it's, that there is a utility to it that everyone understands. Um, it is um, transparent and um, it can take many forms based on the culture of an organization and the need. Um, as I mentioned, it's a planning and management tool and it's a communication tool. Um, because there's no better way to, it's like you're a, a report card, like how are we doing? We said we're going to focus on this and it's a way to uh, to let uh, constituencies, uh, to let uh, management team, um, staff really understand, you know, um, and communicate their progress. Um, you know, the process, um, you know, the strategic plans, you know, usually are based roughly on this, like I, I kind of put it into three parts, okay, um, or phases. Um, that, you know, as I mentioned before in that, the previous slide, it's really based on facts. So we look at a fact base and um, we re, we review existing data. Um, and uh, in the case of uh, you know, uh, the, the town of Whitman, um, you did a community survey. Um, it could be the, um, it could be a capital plan, it could be any other like documentation and, and you've done you've done several reports recently, which would be critically important to this. So you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Um, the, we might want to think about new data inputs, like other factors, you know, earlier in the agenda, you know, you're talking about COVID nineteen. That's certainly a game changer and has influence um, probably across your departments and something to be considered um, in thinking about this planning process. Um, uh, neighboring communities plans, um, that's also a great indicator because adjacent uh, communities might be looking at um, uh, critical areas that, you know, will either, you know, impact um, the town of Whitman and or um, might provide some um, you know, food for thought in terms of considerations as to things that you might want to look at. And also uh, the stakeholders, it's conversations with um, uh, you know, citizens. You, you did that survey, so that was very, very helpful. Um, you want to hear from um, you all, the selectmen, uh, department heads, the town administrator. It's like that, that all contributes to developing the fact base. Like what do we want to know? What, what in, um, what do we know and what do we need to know? Um, and then the, the second part of it, which is really the, the meat of it, um, is trying to think about, based on what we know, what's rising to the surface in terms of goals and objectives? Um, whether it's the broader vision or it's by department. What are our outcomes? You know, what, how do we know? Like what are we trying to achieve? Um, and how would we measure it? And then the resources required to, you know, to implement it. So it's really kind of developing, um, you know, sort of like what is our, like what does that strategy look like, you know, based on the, so based on the data? Um, you know, what are we going to measure it? And um, and what additional, like what resources do we need? And resources, I usually mean, I mean, um, whether it's uh, people or investment. And then, then the, the last part um, is really synthesizing all of this information, the data, um, the strategy development um, in review it with the stakeholders to make sure that we get it right. And then how do we communicate that plan? Um, so everybody's using it internally and externally uh, to the community. Um, so what I would, what I hope we could do for just a couple of minutes um, is to, you know, to get your sort of initial feedback. I just kind of gave you a, you know, sort of a broad brush, you know, sense of like, you know, to make sure we're talking the same um, language about strategic planning. Um, and based on your feedback is to then go back and really prepare a more detailed scope, um, timeline and budget for this project. And you know, and specifically, I'm interested in hearing from you what um, your thoughts, like when, when you thought about the need for a strategic plan, what were you thinking about in, like specifically? Um, and who you think of as the stakeholders and process participants? And then also the timeframe of which um, you're, you're looking at this plan. Is it a one-year plan? Is it a, you know, three-year, five-year plan? I mean, usually those are usually the windows, but generally I'd say three to five-year plans. So I'd like to sort of um, open it up and um, you know, see, you know, hear your thoughts on those questions.
Okay, um, has anybody have any thoughts on this?
Uh, I'll go if you, you want me to.
Okay, Randy, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for coming out, Anne. Uh, very much appreciated and um, uh, I'm, can't tell you how excited I am to, to see this move into what probably is our last uh, puzzle piece yeah, in a, in a very long journey. Um, I, I guess what, my question, eh, where I guess I somewhat pushed back uh, early on in this process was kind of what you mentioned, that you, you've seen strategic plans out there that, that just are a document that was created. Um, I guess my question would be, with the, the pieces that we have with the community survey, with our budget document and uh, our uh, capital plan. You know, if we were to say in a three to five-year period and uh, also including the education piece, um, would you be out talking to our department heads, seeing how they plan to build their departments, what their needs are, uh, and then come back to the, I guess, the economic piece and, and give us a plan, how that could probably possibly coincide and and how we can, you know, mesh those things together and uh, for the best three to five-year outcome.
So um, just to, just to clarify, Randy, are you, um, are you, um, is your question have to do with aligning like sort of department goals with a five-year capital plan?
Uh, yeah, it, it would, it would be take all the pieces that we have, you know,
Yeah.
rough estimates of, you know, economics, uh, our capital plan. But I think where we kind of lack eh, eh, what I've seen is that we, we, we know we have some shortfalls within each and every one of our departments and they just kind of pop up at, at random times and we kind of, it, it seems like we fill them. If, if the money's there that year, we'll fill it. And does that eh, is it negatively affecting other departments where we might not be noticing the critical need right now, but it's just a more of a timing situation and that might get filled, but eh, it, it's really just kind of, I guess, get us all on the same page and you know, figure out exactly where we're going. I don't think we've ever had uh, somebody go out, talk to our department heads, our superintendent and say, where do you want to be in three to five years? And let's put that all together and then obviously the, the town, the stakeholders, the, the town, our kids, you know, they, they ultimately decide where we end up, but eh, eh, it's like you said, that resource, that communication, I think is what we really need.
Right. Well, um, that's a really, that's a really good question. And um, so eh, in thinking about um, uh, you know, in, you know, engaging the departments, in one thing is to um, oftentimes, and it's, it's not unusual, is that um, you know, uh, particularly um, municipalities, um, are in a reactive mode, right? Um, it's, um, there's the day-to-day, um, whether it's, um, let's take DPW, whether it's like, you know, plowing the streets or um, uh, fixing roads, et cetera, et cetera. But then there's sort of, well, where you want, where are you going, right? There's sort of, so, and those, those uh, it's, uh, those are, those co-exist. Um, you, you are constantly multitasking. And if you don't have like, you know, you, I don't mean to use that as like the pun, but a roadmap to figure out, okay, well, there's the day-to-day of what we do to keep the lights on and to make the city, you know, the town run. But then it's sort of saying, well, like as we think about the town and what our vision for the town, what's the vision for the town? What's the vision for the department? How does the department support that broader vision, if that makes sense? Um, so think of it like an org chart in a sense. So there's the, you know, the overarching, you know, sort of like goals of the town. Um, and, but then within each department has a supporting role in making those happen. And then if you drill it down further, each department has their overarching goals and they're, the, what they're going to do tactically to make those things happen. If that follows. So there's understanding, and that also informs, um, having a process that can be repeated like every, say, five years, is that um, people start thinking about it, not just in terms of um, their capital needs, but it's the capital needs are informed by us, like a, a strategic vision for what needs to happen, right?
Eh, and I think, um, just like you said, it's reactionary and I, and I think the town has done a great job of being reactionary. And we, and through that, we've done some great things.
Mm-hmm.
But you, you don't always get progress when you're, you know, kind of strictly reactionary.
Well.
And I, I think that's where, you know, when we started talking about the strategic plan, you know, what way can, like you said, roadmap?
Well, it's also.
A way to get a little bit more progress and get, get off the reactionary scale.
Well, the, I think that the other um, part of it, Randy, is uh, the ability to have um, incremental um, benchmarks of achievement. Um, so might say in um, you know, five years, we're going to build a new um, you know, uh, you know, sort of police station. But um, there's very specific, well, steps in order of progress to kind of get to that point. And so a strategic, like a, a good plan allows, um, you know, the department head uh, that, you know, the um, the selectmen, the town administrator to be able to really discuss it as a planning document. Um, and to, uh, you know, have the ability to uh, identify um, you know, sort of roadblocks in areas of like, uh, I call them course correction. Um, because you've got a document that's really like a plan, like that project plan to achieve those goals, right? So it's not, um, it's more, uh, you're, you're really working with um, you're singing from the same book and you, everyone knows that it's transparent and it's okay to say we're having like, you know, we're being challenged by this, let's discuss it and figure this out. Um, as opposed to, you know, you know, shoulder to the wheel, just keep marching forward, you know, for five years and then see, you know, life doesn't work that way. Clearly, issues come up all the time that impact, um, you know, in, intentions. So um, you know, that's, you know, the advantage of having like a plan, but that also drills down to by department and getting their engagement with that.
Anybody else have any questions for? Uh, I, I may have my observations um, in a strategic plan. I look at, I would like to see like each department in the town, whether, you know, in each building, like the library, the senior center, uh, police, fire, all, the DPW, all the different buildings, come up with some type of a a plan to improve their departments and buildings and to improve on uh, serving the townspeople.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, I can remember uh, back uh, in the early eighties when uh, we decided to go with the sewer, the sewer, you know, get a hook into sewer. It was a major project, but it was looking to the future. Not, you know, not looking at a ten years down the road, but thirty, forty, fifty years down the road. And uh, it's one of the greatest achievements that we have so that our town can build itself up because we have down sewage. Well, like a lot of other towns that are still working with septic systems and that minimizes what construction they can do in their towns.
Mm-hmm.
So that, uh, it's something like that that helps us. I think like if the senior center or the library or different buildings, different departments that service the townspeople can come up with a future plan of things that uh, they either see in other towns that are being done that we are not doing or that they feel that they could, that our uh, people that live in town wouldn't mind, we'll say, paying for it because all things cost money.
Right.
You know, and, you know, and if you want to make improvements, that, you know, it all comes down to the dollar to get it done. But I think that each department should have a vision of what they, how they should be servicing the peoples and the, and their town, their customers.
Mm-hmm.
And see where they go. I mean, I know like we need a new DPW, that's big on our list. Hopefully we can get that accomplished. Uh, and things like that. I know we built a new police station when, uh, but it was reaction. Our old police station was falling apart. We couldn't do anything about it. And we, and we, we went forward and built a new one. Same thing with our fire department. We, you know, in the old days, you used to have two, two buildings. Now we went to one, but we doubled the size of that building. And in the future, that's going to have to be redone again.
Mm-hmm.
Because of, of the needs of the town. So I'm just looking for all department heads to kind of look into the future on what they foresee, what their requirements and the needs to satisfy uh, the residents of the town of Whitman.
Mm-hmm. And I think that those, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's very helpful. Um, and it's a good point because those, having like the, like sort of an over, like, like a long-term vision, but then there's sort of the, um, there's the, there's the tactical part. It sort of leads, that's leading you to that vision, right?
Right.
Um, and so uh, that we, we've got our eyes like, we, we, you have to look down the road. But um, but there's things that we can do today that will get us there.
Right, so. Anybody else have any uh, suggestions or questions or ideas?
I would just like to add, um, I may the um, I, I think the thing that's been missing of all the work. I would just like to add, I think the thing that's been missing of all the work we've done over the last few years. Is the economic development planning. So we've spent a lot of time on, on the community survey, on a, a capital planning. We, we actually put a lot of work into and the. Building facilities capital expenditure committee is, is coming a long way and, and sticking to that. But as far as economic development goes, we've got a draft housing production plan that the planning board and, and our board hasn't adopted yet. But around town, we've got a lot of underutilized assets, whether it's the, the park, app school or, you know, four acres of vacant land next to the train station. Things like that, that like could be an easy fix, easy economic growth and, and we don't have a, a vision for it yet.
Anybody else?
Go ahead, Brian. For coming, I appreciate it. This is a great. Way to get this all tied up together with all these other programs that we've done, but. You know, for me, I think one thing that I, I've always looked to in this town. I've lived in this town since nineteen sixty. And it seems like my road is the same road I had in nineteen sixty. So I think as far as you brought up the DPW, I think for us to have some kind of a strategic plan to really be aggressive. To upgrade our roads. You know, I know we have the, the chapter ninety monies that come in and it's clearly not enough. You might get one or two streets maybe done every year and it just seems like, you know, by the time we get through. You'll have to start all over again and some of these streets have not been done. Since when Dan had brought up the sewage that was put in eighties. Some of the roads are still like, you know, patched from then. So I think we need to make a priority of that. If you look on social media a lot locally, that's one of the biggest complaints I think I see. Have is, is the, you know, the roads, the potholes, you know, the sidewalks, the, you know, a lot of the. Young families and the seniors are complaining a lot about the sidewalks, that they can't move a stroller or, you know. All the folks can't use a walker, they, things like that. So tho- those things to me seem like those are the. Nuts and bolts of what a lot of them wants to see in a strategic plan. They want to know that. We're going to try to address these in an aggressive manner. And what Justin said about, you know, those, the open spaces, things near the trains. You know, that park app school, those are all things that we probably should have already done. And it just seems like everything gets in the way. Of, of trying to accomplish these things. There's always some tragedy de jour every year. And, and so to have this kind of a plan. In combination with all those other plans that we've, we've accumulated over the last year and a half, two years. I think we'll go to great lengths to help. Even prove to the citizens that we have some kind of a, a vision of trying to make it a better place. You know, they chose Whitman.
Right.
And I, I'm sure they want to stay here, but they want to see that their textile is, I use it a manner. That's going to help them and, and not just trench water.
Right. I mean, that, that's a, that's an excellent point. And the, the thing that. There's a lot of connective tissue between, you know, economic development and infrastructure investment. So, and access and quality of life were for, for children and, you know, families and seniors. I mean. So I think that in a sense that it's also important to think about, like it's a system, right? And there's an interdependence among this, you know, the, the system for quality of life. To attract economic development, people to the town, et cetera, et cetera. So that's another, that's a. It, there's a. An aspect of us, like having a plan that connects the dots. And for departments and agent, you know, agencies to understand their contribution, their role. In, you know, that overall, you know, sort of quality of life for the town of Whitman. So. But those, that's a really, really good point. It is about nuts and bolts and when, you know, that's what citizens, you know, that's what they, they're, they're paying their taxes and. That's what they expect and that's why they, they vote with their, you know, their feet, like whether they, they stay, you know, they stay in the town or not. So this is really helpful feedback.
Okay, that being said, anybody else have any questions?
I would just add, I, I think if, you know, we ultimately. Decide to go forward, Ms. Donner, she'll, she'll, when speaking to our department heads, I think we have a great group of. Very competent, qualified department heads that each definitely have a, probably an idea of where they want to see their department. The problem is, is we just don't have that global, you know, that document that puts it together, which. I think has caused some of the challenges that Brian mentioned that it's, it, it's like, what's the next? You know, disaster or tragedy that we're going to deal with. It's, there just hasn't been that one thing we can say. This, this is how we should have, you know, proceeded along this path. But it's, by no means do I want, what I want the public to ever think, like, we don't have department heads that. That have a very strong grasp of their ability and, and their departments. It's that one document that says, look, the communication tool, like you said, that we can properly relay this out. And then, you know, if we do ask people to pay at that point, they know they're, what they're getting for their money.
Right. I mean, the plan, it also provides, you know, a report card. And, you know, this is what we said we were, you know, that we were going to do and this is how we're doing. And it's helpful to everybody to be able to, to sort of, you know, track and gauge progress.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes, Justin.
Yeah, just for, for Ms. Donner, do you get into personnel at all? I know one of the things we're facing over the next few years is a lot of retirements.
Yeah, I, the, it's, I, I understand that you have a small personnel department. And so, but that, but like, that's a, you know, personnel and like human resources are like, you know. They're, they really are the lifeblood of, you know, you know, the town. You need people. And you also need a plan to attract the talent. You know, to, you know, to choose Whitman as, you know, their employer of choice. Also thinking about systems to, if, if, you know, I, I'll use an example. This may not be the case, but. You know, are there ways to, when you think about like human resources or personnel, you know, are, you know, are. How are we doing and, you know, what should we be thinking about? What are, should our goals be? You know, is our, you know, the demographics about a workforce that might be, you know, aging out. You know, close to retirement. I mean, as you mentioned, you know, are there's like sist, how, how do the employees? Are there things that we could be doing as an employer that would improve our operation? So there's an operational aspect to it. So absolutely. You know, that's part of, you know, sort of the, like, you know, when you think of departments, there's sort of, there's administration and finances department, right? That's how you, like, I think of it.
Anybody else? I guess my question is, where do we go from here now? Lisa? What's our next step? Do you think?
Sorry, muted. So I'll work with, with Ms. Donner and. Now that she has a, a clear, good idea of the direction. She can put together a, a proposal with a, a price proposal and a scope of work. And I will, as soon as I receive it, I'll distribute it to everyone and then we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting. To vote to move forward or again, make some adjustments if needed, if need be.
That sounds like a plan. I want to thank you, I want to thank you very much.
Meeting everyone.
And this presentation, it was uplifting. I liked it. So.
And thanks so much.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll talk soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. At that, at that, I need a motion to go into a executive session in accordance with general, with Governor Baker. March twelve, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law thirty A twenty. This meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode. Hosted by zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. At this meeting, we will be held in executive session. No broadcast of this meeting will be made. So I need a vote to move into executive session with, in accordance with National Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigations, if in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, so I so declare. We'll be talking about reclassification of the treasurer's office clerical position. And to police VOIS training. Do I hear a motion?
So move, Brian.
Back and Randy.
Okay, and we'll be coming in, we'll be leaving, journey here, going into executive session. And we'll be journeying our meeting at executive session. All right, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'm voting yes. I'll see you all in executive session. Thank you.